All right. Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock. I'd like to officially call this meeting to order. Linda, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Goldsmith?
Here.
Councilmember Trolinger is not present. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Present.
Mayor James, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Would you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In looking at the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the August 15, 2023, meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And we have two sets of minutes here that if you have had the opportunity to review them, I will accept a motion and to accept the minutes for July 25th and August 8th.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the July 25, 2023, and August 8, 2023, meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us down to a portion of our agenda that is public comment. If anybody would like to speak, I ask that you state your name, whether you live in the incorporated town limits, and if you could keep your comments to three minutes or less, that would be wonderful. Anybody? All right. So then, next on our agenda is the Environmental Pollution Liability Insurance, which I have been waiting with bated breath from for Mr. Sanders to present to us, so.
Well, I was just gonna introduce Mr. Sanders.
Good.
He's got a quick presentation for you that you guys have seen the the summary of, just to give you a little history. We, for the last two or three months, we've been working with Larry with operations to complete this liability insurance application, which is a lot of pages.
I heard it's quite exciting.
It was quite exciting. So just to give you a brief history and let you know what it's all about, Mr. Sanders?
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Environmental Pollution and Liability Insurance. I can see the big turnout is so warranted. I believe you all have a little highlight information page I put together. I'll try and hit some of the highlights, maybe very briefly, high level, expand on them. And if you have any questions, be glad to take those. We have worked with the town for quite a number of years. I've been in the business 45 years, so I know it's at least that long. Regarding many forms of insurance, pollution liability in the last 20 years has become for not only municipalities, counties, but private home developments, et cetera, quite a big issue, whether it's wastewater treatment, sewer lines, pumping stations, or potable water, domestic water systems. So we have provided this coverage, and it is a very small number of carriers, insurance companies, that offer that. And it's tightly underwritten, to say the least. But I have listed on here the insurance company, AXA XL Insurance Companies. They operate about 200 companies. They have 20-some different subsidiaries, including reinsurance companies. They write and delve into what we call the more difficult lines. There's probably in this area of the United States, there might be 10 companies that look at different types of it. I'm your local agent here in La Plata, Washington Avenue. I think many of you might know where and who we are. There's a few advantages of this coverage that we are able to secure for you. One is, to your benefit, they did a three-year policy, which is not easy to get, which means that your premium is locked in for three years unless you make adjustments or changes. Those would come in the form of an expansion, as you all annexed in, and add sewer and water lines. That adds to the premium, right? The more you have, the greater the exposure, the bigger the premium. And we perform, on the behalf of the town, a due diligence review every three years. In essence, we look into the marketplace to see what's available, what's going on, what's offered, what coverages might be offered. This time, they weren't offered last time. Any questions so far? There's two main components that I want to touch base on real quickly. First is the pollution liability, and you all may be aware of what's happened in the last few months. I believe our county had a little incident you may have heard about a couple or so weeks ago with a release. And I believe your friends across the river at Colonial Beach had a and I'm not familiar with the details, but I believe they had a little incident a couple of months or so ago. Not knowing the details, but a pollution event that would bring some type of liability issue upon or negligence issue upon the town is what this is designed to provide coverage for. It's, in essence, contamination or pollution to others that injures them or causes damage to their property. We have a $2 million aggregate limit. Okay, that's the most they will pay, including defense, legal fees, and compensatory damages. A pollution condition is basically a discharge, release, escape of pollutants, as is defined in the policy. And in most municipalities, the main exposure is the sewer pipes, the sewer system, pumping stations, and the wastewater treatment plant. Generally speaking, the water, the potable water exposure is lower down down the difficulty era. So that's what we're looking to provide from a high level. The policy is many pages thick, so I am giving you just a brief highlight. If you can't fall asleep, I'll give you a copy. You can read it. But there's another very important coverage that's provided, and this is one that the the town kind of earned, and I'll explain that in a minute. There's emergency remediation response for outside resources in the event that you have some type of a catastrophe that's a release and you need immediate assistance. It's outside of the town's normal capabilities. And that's a half a million dollars. It requires prompt reporting. The company wants to be know, wants to know what's going on. And again, it's really designed for outside help that you must bring in to help mitigate and reduce the event that has occurred.
A question. So something like that happened with the county? And if they had insurance, I don't know how much it costs to clean up that. But this would be what the insurance, up to $2 million, would pay for the cleanup and the legal fees, which I'm sure that they, there will be some coming from that. Is that?
Yes, you're on the correct track there.
Okay.
Yes. And also, it provides defense with the resulting lawsuits that may or may not arise, et cetera.
$2 million, when you're talking this kind of thing, which can expand like crazy, it doesn't sound like a lot. You take a look at Flint, Michigan. What happened there? Did companies go bankrupt trying to solve that?
Yes. I mean, it, there's something, and to be honest with you, certain conditions are not insurable. If you had a system with the lead and some of the other issues that have been talked about in areas like that, you probably aren't insurable for that. Right? I mean, I would relate it to someone with lots of tickets and accidents on auto insurance, to use a more familiar scenario. That answer what you're
Yeah.
There is a $25,000 self-insured retention per incident that applies. I'm gonna say this. This is similar, but not the same, but it's a deductible.
Okay.
To use a term you all may be familiar with, slightly different, but close enough to explain it. And it's applicable to all the coverages.
I do have another question. I know that we have insurance through Legit. And if we have a water, their sewer backup, a sewer backup, which is causing problems to houses and flooding, which it did on Washington Avenue, is this coverage here, or is that our other coverage?
Typically, a backup is going to be picked up by the other coverage that you have through the local government insurance trust.
But if we let that go, and it creates a lot of pollution?
Yes, that gets into local stream and waterways and, you know, runs down and through houses and the like, then yes, you're getting into a different thing than just what I would call a valve malfunction that's a backup.
All right. Any questions? Dave, do you have any questions?
Yeah, real quick. Yeah, I guess, real quick. So this is a due diligence review. Does this also look at the cost of this policy?
Absolutely. We tried to get quotes from five different carriers. We had to decline for various reasons, because they're restricting their offerings in the area of municipalities, counties, et cetera, cities. So yes, we did look at other options. Personally, in my experience, and I will say this, I called upon a bunch of people to help in this, because we did have multiple applications and lots of forms, and the file was many inches thick. I want to say that your focus on keeping your system up to snuff makes a huge, huge difference in this. And I also want to compliment particularly Michelle and Bobby. Friday, June 8, to help with the town, I was able to get the safety management, loss control, and underwriting from one of the companies on a conference call with them. And they went into great detail about what the town has done, the improvements the town has made. And I will tell you, when you do that to an underwriter who asks questions, and you get detailed answers like that, it makes a massive difference in the underwriting. I mean, this premium could have easily exceeded $100,000. Easily, because it is a three-year lock-in. So they are in, you know, they have a contract with the town for these three years. So underwriters by nature are a very cautious group in this area. Lots of documents. So you do owe them. They put in a yeoman's effort in that. They got tired of talking to me, but they did a yeoman's effort.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Bobby, you're tired of talking with you?
So we're getting a pretty, so we're getting a pretty good deal on the premium, is what you're telling me. And it's reflective of the hard work that public works and operations does, and all the, all the department has, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I continue to think that the market, to be honest with you, moving forward in this area, given our general societal reference towards environmental issues, is going to continue to be diligently underwritten. So from an insurance standpoint, if you don't keep these things up to snuff and 100%, and rate up with the latest, it will be a problem with something like this, because the underwriters and loss control people are on top of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I do have one comment. Actually, it's, thank you for your presentation, but we have something for you.
Uh-oh.
So I'm gonna come over here, and I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Bryant Ward, and I'm gonna go right next to you, Councilwoman Goldsmith, so you're not moving much. Come on over here. We understand that you have been in our town for 120 years.
We have.
And you know what? That is, first of all, the longevity is, is hard to do when you're in with a small business, and you have continued to grow. And I read the background about how your dad started this, and it was, it's amazing. So 100 years, 120 years, and we wanted to present you with our, yeah, don't touch your glasses.
No, I see that.
That means that I'm gonna have to read it here. It says, "The Council of the Town of La Plata offered sincere congratulations to Edward L. Sanders Insurance Agency in recognition of 120 years of service to the residents and businesses of the town of La Plata and the surrounding area." And we presented it today. We're not, I don't know when your actual anniversary was, but it's a year anniversary.
120 years, I don't remember.
120 years. So thank you very much with that, and we appreciate you staying here.
Very nice.
Right, are we getting it again?
I would do more insurance presentations if I knew I was gonna get this along the way.
You can stand. You can. We'll get this. You do not get up. We'll do this, and we'll have Councilwoman Bryant would come up right over here. Thank you.
We've been on the same block for 101 years.
Wow, that's amazing. That is amazing. Thank you very much, and thank you for explaining the insurance. We're greatly appreciated. All right. Next on the agenda is our legislative priorities. Mr. Manuel?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, we just wanted to bring this to your attention since we are getting into the legislative season. I guess the General Assembly will kick off their session in January. Prior to that, town, working through Cornerstone Government Affairs, will be meeting individually with the delegation, Charles County delegation, to sort of put forth some some of our legislative priorities. More specifically, two of those would be bond bills, one being for monies relative to the design of the future police station. The other item that we have identified is additional monies for Dorchester Community Center for the construction and somewhat design of that facility. And additionally to that, we also had a, I guess, legislative priority on the tourism zone. That actually went to MML, and it was not chosen. I think it was recommended that maybe we work through the local delegation to see if we could get a member to introduce that specific enabling legislation from the state to allow communities to establish tourism zones, very similar to what the state currently does for arts and entertainment districts, where it's local tax that could be rebated in the event, have had the opportunity to work for a community that did do a tourism tax, and most of it was employment-related, number of employees. We were able to sort of rebate, refund certain developmental costs associated with that to try to give them a little bit of a nudge to get them up and running. So it would be a program, if it were enabled, that each community in the state of Maryland would have the opportunity to consider it on its own merits and determine whether they felt it was a good fit for them. It's not something that you'd have to do. It was something that the council would decide to do, and then establish the parameters set to sort of fulfill that requirement to get the rebate, if you will. So those are the legislative priorities that we've identified. And as I said, we will be attempting to meet with the Charles County delegation to sort of put forth these. One, to bring them to your attention. I think the, at least the bond referendums are sort of, I don't want to say no brainers, but it's consistent with our past asks. You know, we did receive, I believe it was $100,000 sign for the police department. And I think we had asked for, you know, quite a bit more, but we will go back to the well. It'll be interesting to see how much money is gonna be available for bond bills. I understand that initial thoughts are there may not be as much as there was last year, so it could be even more competitive this year than it has been in previous years. But no, we won't receive it if we don't ask. So we will do what we have to do to move these initiatives forward, and just want to get a consensus of council that you're in coordination with this idea and the three items that we've put forward.
Be back. Are questions from Mr. Manuel?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just looking at the LAR, and it says 2023 legislative request, but the deadline on it is July 2022. Is that the correct?
That may have been for the MML consideration.
That was a mistake on their application.
Okay.
And really, the reason we're talking about this now is because there's a lot of work that goes into it by the Charles County delegation in advance of their sort of January start date with the session. So we want to get to them early and often.
Right. I was just concerned about the form, the document itself.
And we, we will adjust that.
The 2022 date.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, because it will really be the 2024. It's hard to believe, but the 2024 legislative session.
Okay. Councilman Goldsmith, do you have any questions? Councilman Jenkins?
I guess I'm gonna, probably a question I can direct it to the town manager, but in the LARs for 2024, I'm no longer on the list of committees, so I guess I have to talk to him now. I had some follow-up questions on a couple of their LAR, so I guess I can direct my questions to their staff. So I'll do that.
And they have not, they're having a meeting on the 30th of August to narrow it down to the top priority and the strategic initiative. So really, this was, I believe this attachment was to show where, for the tourism zone, what MML thought the assets and liabilities would be on that. And just the other, the other information was attached to it. That's really not pertinent to the request that is here for our legislative priorities.
Correct. I just, was just talking out loud that I'll contact MML for questions, my questions on some of these LARs. That's all.
So I want for a consensus to have staff move forward with a bond build, a request for for our delegation, for the police department and the DCC, and then initiative for a tourism zone.
I support.
I support it. And Councilman Jenkins?
I would support, but I would just say, again, is there any chance to talk to the Dorchester community folks about what they're doing, the status?
Yeah, I have a, trying to schedule it in my calendar for Thursday with Coach B to get an update on their sort of status, as well as sort of relay back to him sort of what my findings were in my review, which was, they've got about a $3 million building with about $1.4 million worth of money. So, you know, once they get themselves, you know, their board fully established, we're gonna have to have a conversation about where do we go from here? Do we reduce the the scope of the, the size of the building to meet their budget? Or, you know, as this request would be, we may have more money to consider, but, you know, I don't think we're gonna fill a $1.6 million hole. So there's gonna have to be some conversations, but I'll be reaching out to Coach B on that. And I've also signed up for a webinar, because now the state is, we have to, they have a whole process for, I guess, calling these funds, especially for the police station, when we want to utilize them. So they have a whole training exercise that the staff will be going through to ensure we're meeting all the necessary requirements in that process.
Thank you.
I'm in favor of moving forward, too. So we do have consensus. All right. Next on our agenda is the La Plata Police Department vehicle purchase. Who's the lucky one to come on down? You can, you can either sit, or you can stand, whatever you're more comfortable with. Just make sure the mic is on, please. There you go. Good job.
Chief Shinner wanted me to let you guys know that he's representing the Maryland Chiefs Association this week at the, let me get this right, the National Governors Highway Traffic Safety Association Conference in New York City. So that's why we are here in his place. So the agency was informed by the vendor after the council approved the purchase of four vehicles that the 2023 model year cruisers are no longer being except, or being produced, and that we would have to purchase the 2024 model vehicles. On August 9, the vendor informed the agency that it began to accept orders for the 2024 model vehicles, and there was an unknown window of opportunity to order. They closed the window after a while, and you can't order any more vehicles. The, originally, the price increase for the four units was gonna be $10,360 because of the uncertainty in obtaining the vehicles and the fact that we currently are down to one spare unit the agency is recommending to purchase. That was earlier in the week. Late yesterday, we got an updated quote, and it's not gonna be as much. We originally thought the vehicles were gonna be $43,063, with the total cost being of $171,616. Now, it looks like the purchase price is gonna be $42,353, so not quite as much as the the dealer had originally quoted us. And the purchase will exceed the agency's budgeted for the cruiser fund for the, and associate equipment by approximately $10,000. However, the agency is not requesting additional funds, and the cost will be absorbed in other parts of the budget. Originally, I think we were approved for five vehicles. The chief now wants to buy four additional vehicles instead of the fifth vehicle right now. Historically, we've gone with the Southwest Fleet model purchasing one type of vehicle, with the exception for frontline patrol vehicles. That vehicle's been the Ford police utility. Unfortunately, Ford has not published fleet purchasing prices for the 2024 model, and they didn't make any police vehicles in 2023 due to some chip problems. So it's basically left two vehicles on the market, the Chevy Tahoe, which got really expensive, and now the Dodge Durango is what we're requesting. Dodge Chargers as frontline police vehicles have been well documented to have front-end brake problems. However, the Dodge Durango, it does share the poor track record of the Charger. However, the Charles County Sheriff's Office has piloted several Dodge Durangos to see how the vehicle is held up under patrol conditions. I recently spoke to their fleet manager, and they've ordered 24 additional Dodge Durangos. So I guess they're happy with the performance so far. They've had them on the, they've had two or three on the road for about a year now, and they're purchasing 24 more now. So that's what we'd like to go with. The agency, like the vast majority of agencies nationwide, relies on information from the Maryland State Police on vehicles that are certified as patrol-worthy. This ensures our officers are driving vehicles meant for patrol duty. In FY24, the agency budgeted $300,000 for new cruisers and outfitting. The funds were designated to purchase new vehicles, as well as emergency equipment for the pending vehicle delivery, as well of the other orders. The cost of the three vehicles designated for patrol is 120, 474, I'm sorry, $120,474, and one marked vehicle for $40,509, a total cost of $161,256, as noted, the funds were included in the FY24 budget. And the purchase will be made under Maryland State contract for the vehicles. And that's all I really have on the vehicles. Any questions?
Now, you have the funding. You know what vehicles want. What's the availability of the vehicles? How long will it take you to get your vehicles?
We ordered the first four vehicles back in
They should be your, the first four, if you're running on, it's the same.
So it's not a, not a problem?
Yeah, it's about a month or two for the production-wise, and then, of course, they've gotta go get outfitted, which is usually dependent on how busy the outfitter is, about a month or so. So hopefully, within the next two, two and a half months, we should have these on the road.
Yes. So will the radios and computers fit this model?
Yes.
Vehicle? No issues there?
Yeah, the company we use, they build all kinds of different police vehicles. So they have all the lights and the sirens and the radios and the different consoles and everything to fit a wide variety of vehicles.
Councilman Jenkins, do you have any questions?
No, no questions, but thanks again for bringing the revised information forward.
You're welcome.
So I am looking for a consensus to move this to legislation.
I agree.
And Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Okay, and same here. I will move this to legislation. Don't leave yet, because you've got one more, right?
I know.
Go ahead.
Council, as you remember, the La Plata Police Department was able to piggyback on the Prince George's County Police Department Speed Photo Enforcement Contract through Conduit State and Local Solutions. The agency has been meeting weekly with members of CSLS to bring photo enforcement online in La Plata. The agency has been meeting weekly with members of CSLS to bring photo enforcement online in La Plata. Currently, CSLS has a permit request pending with Charles County Government for speed photo enforcement on Radio Station Road. Um, CASLS informed us recently that the State Highway Administration will not approve the proposed sites on Charles Street and Port Tobacco Road without the town adopting a local ordinance about speed photo enforcement. Uh, the agency provided several examples of municipal ordinances to the town's attorney. The attorney drafted an ordinance that conforms to the Maryland photo enforcement laws, and once the ordinance is adopted, CSLS will file the permit request with SHA and finalize the engineering plans.
All right. Do I have any questions from council?
No.
Right. So I'm looking for a consensus to move this forward to legislation for an introduction tonight.
Prove me. Yes.
All right, same here. All right, thank you very much. That brings us down to legislation, which is ordinance 23-17. Um, wait a minute, did I miss one? No, that's right. 20, uh, ordinance 23-17, speed monitoring system for introduction.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, an ordinance concerning speed monitoring system for the purpose of amending Chapter 181 of the Code of the Town of La Plata to add provisions to address the implementation of speed monitoring systems pursuant to state law.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to Resolution 23-27 uh, for consideration of adoption.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, an amendment an amended resolution concerning La Plata Police Department Fiscal Year 2024 Vehicle Purchase for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract purchase agreement of utility vehicles for the La Plata Police Department in all matters generally relating thereto.
All right. Entertained motion to adopt Resolution 23-27 as presented?
I move to adopt Resolution 23-27 as, 23 as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Yes.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us down to new business, commission reports. Councilman Goldsmith?
Nothing to report.
Councilman Bryant Ward? All right, Councilman Jenkins?
Uh, nothing to report at this time.
All right. I have a few upcoming events. Um, tomorrow we have the Uncle Devon Show. That is the interactive musical experience for children by drummer and percussionist Devon Walker. So that should be, that's the one that is between DC's Trouble Funk and Schoolhouse Rock. So it sounds like a lot of fun. And then on Thursday, the Southern Maryland Martial Arts Fitness will be here and uh, demonstrating some Taekwondo moves, and it's a fitness, uh, self-discipline, self-esteem, self-control, winning attitude and focus. So that seems to be a, a very popular um, event that's coming up. Friday, the 18th, we have uh, our Friday night concert, which is Beach Bumps, which is going to be a lot of beach music. So I understand there may be lays uh, that are being handed out. We encourage everyone to wear Hawaiian attire. So a, a lot of fun and and I am going to really hope for great weather. So this, because these guys have not played for us before. On Saturday, August 19th, Walmart has a wellness day. They invite the community to prioritize their health as they head back to school. Um, from 10 to 2 at uh, our local Walmart, they will provide free health screenings, free and low-cost immunizations, and the opportunity to talk with a local Walmart pharmacist. They've been doing this uh, since 2014, and this is uh, something that is open to the public and uh, in all 4,600 stores nationwide. On um, the 19th also, we've got, we have uh, it will be Willing Helpers Society, Historic Willings Helper Society will be celebrating 120 years. So they will be having some events out there. We've got on uh, Friday, August 25th, that will be our last concert, and that will close out with Bobby McKees. And we have Saturday, the 26th of August is the Kent Avenue Block Party from uh, 12 to 3. And then on Monday, August 29th, um, I, I always remember seeing this commercial that they would say, "It's the most wonderful time of the year. School begins again." So that song always plays in my head. Some Charles County Public School um, will be back in session. So we have to make sure to really obey the bus rules and make sure that our children are safe going to school. And then on a personal note, um, I just want to say I was so saddened by the catastrophic wildfires that decimated the beautiful historic town of Lahaina out there in Maui. Uh, my deepest sympathies goes to the families of those who have tragically lost loved ones and continue to pray for the loved ones that are missing and whose homes and businesses were destroyed. And on a personal note, my thoughts and prayers are with the members of the Hawaiian National Guard and all the active-duty troops out there during this very difficult time as they provide security and continue to search for uh, remains in Lahaina. So uh, you know, it's, you don't think it can happen, um, but it did, and it's one of the worst deadly wildfires uh, in the history. So continue to keep them in your thoughts and uh, with that, I will entertain and, oh, I will entertain Mr. Manuel to say something. Yes.
Yeah, just a quick reminder, Thursday evening, uh, Bobby, do you have a time yet that they're gonna 9:00 PM, Wash, a portion of Washington Avenue in the area of uh, the new library uh, will be closed. They're going to be doing an investigation on sort of the valve configuration as they sort of get into providing water to that uh, portion of the, of the town. Uh, Washington Avenue being a county road, uh, of course, it's our system. So uh, and Bobby really fought to move that time farther uh, into the evening, which uh, will hopefully lessen the impact to residents. I don't think there's a lot of traffic on Washington Avenue at that point. Uh, and then addition, uh, to, addition to that, on the 21st, uh, as you probably noticed from the variable message sign on St. Mary's Avenue, the uh, we will begin the conversion to a four-way stop at Centennial and St. Mary's. So.
Thank you very much. Um, I move to adjourn. Everyone have a good night. Thank you so much for coming.
Councilman Jenkins, did you have something you wanted to ask?